Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd ask that you please find your seats as tonight's forum gets underway. Firstly, I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to attend and participate in the local democratic process. It's terrific to see so many people willing to be, willing to learn more about our candidates for elected office. I'd also like to take a quick opportunity to thank our sponsors. The Fergus Falls Noon Rotary, The Fergus Falls Daily Journal, Layton Broadcasting, and Peg Access Television. All organizations have generously committed their time, staff, and resources to help make this possible, and we couldn't do it without them. Finally, I want to extend a special thank you to a Center for the Arts for affording us an ideal venue tonight. With all that having been said, let's meet your candidates for the Fergus Falls School Board in 2018. Candidates, I'd ask that you please stand as you're introduced so that the audience can get to know you. And audience, if you would, please join me after each candidate is introduced with a round of applause. From left to right, they are Mr. Kirby Anderson, Ms. Melanie Cole, Mr. Blaine Danielson, Mr. John Hugmo, Ms. Missy Hermes. In a moment, we will allow each of the candidates to provide a personal introduction to themselves and their campaigns, but first, a brief review of the rules and etiquette for the forum. As the conversation begins, each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce themselves. Then, questions in the debate proper will be underway. My name is R.C. Drews, and it will be my privilege to once again serve as moderator throughout the proceedings. To the audience members, I would ask that you refrain from applause, cheering, or other shows of preference outside of the candidate introductions and the event's conclusion. We want to ensure that we can include as many questions as possible into the 90 minutes we've allotted this evening, and we also want to ensure respectful atmosphere for all candidates. To our candidates and the audience, a reminder of tonight's process. During the question phase of the forum, responses will be limited to two minutes per speaker. At the one-minute mark, or halfway, our official in the front row will hold up a yellow card. When the stopwatch reaches just 10 seconds left, he will hold up a red card. Should any candidate exceed the maximum time limit, it will be my responsibility to interrupt out of fairness to the other candidates. Candidates, in the event that you wish to make a rebuttal, following another speaker's statement, I ask that you simply raise your hand and gain my attention. If the divergence seems appropriate, I will, as soon as the speaking, as soon as the speaking candidate concludes, permit the rebuttal and allow 30 seconds for a counterstatement. Please note that the questions tonight, with the exception of two, which were given in advance to all candidates, have been written by myself and are known to myself only in the interest of fairness. Some of our questions came from public submissions, and we thank those of you who took the time to lend your voices to this event. Finally, I would remind our candidates and myself to speak loudly and to enunciate clearly. The microphones in front of you will only pick up your responses if they are facing you directly, so please take a moment to ensure your microphones are positioned accordingly for the sake of the audience and for those listening via Layton Broadcasting's live broadcast and watching via Peg Access Television. Without further ado, we will now hear an introduction from each of the candidates, beginning once again from left to right. Mr. Anderson, you have two minutes, sir.
Okay, my name is Kirby Anderson. I attended our public schools here for 12 years. I graduated here in 1974. I then went to Morehead Tech and majored in computer programming. From 1972 until 1977, I worked as a seasonal farm laborer, driving swatter, combine, tractors, and trucks. In 1977, I began a 36-year career at Ottertail Power. I started out as a computer programmer and later worked in market planning, IT management, wind development, and strategic planning. And I retired in 2013, five years ago. I currently do part-time work in concrete, and I also do some handyman work, mostly just for fun. My educational background also includes a two-year degree from the college in town here, as well as a four-year business degree at Morehead State and a master's in business administration at Morehead State. I am married to Linay Leary, in the front row down there. She's formerly at Ferber. She's a real estate agent for Century Tornado and Vista. We have four children and six grandchildren. Our main hobbies are to spoil our grandkids at our lake home just north of town, and we also like to help out our moms, Marcia Ferber and Bev Anderson, both of whom are widowed and live right here in town. I've served on several local boards, including church, Rotary, Children's Services, FFC Foundation, and the Long Lake Association. I've also taught computer classes at the college and through community ed. And during my career at Ottertail, I've managed dozens of employees, multi-million dollar budgets, and also facilitated strategic planning meetings. Having lived in the community for most of my 62 years, I've seen various boards, superintendents and administrators at work. I've seen many things that have worked well and some things that haven't worked out, and I think it's imperative that we craft a good working relationship with the superintendent, teachers, support staff, and administration based on mutual respect, collegiality, and a joint commitment to student success. The current board has a lot of important issues to deal with in the coming years, and I think we can do well. I believe that I have the time and talents to play a key role in bringing everyone together to foster that success, and I truly believe that if we as board members are effective leaders and are committed to building and maintaining a solid partnership with the administration, teachers, students, parents, and community members, then the goal of providing the best education possible for our students will be much more easily attained. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Cole.
This weekend, I had two of my sons home, and we made a huge leaf pile in the backyard. And I got my go-kart out and raced through it at the highest rate of speed as I could. And that says something to you about me because it says a lot about me. I enjoy my family. I enjoy time outdoors. I just look to enjoy the finer and simpler things in life. I moved to Fergus Falls 27 years ago, working for the Department of Corrections as a probation and parole officer. I got interested in work, being on the school board when my children were in their elementary, beginning in the elementary areas of school. And then, just wanted, just wanted to continue from there. I grew up near Inwoodina County, near Bluegrass. I think a lot of you know where that's at. And from a young age, joined in 4-H. My dad was a community leader. Beginning in seventh grade, I was on the student council, and every year was on student council from then on. I was class president, and in college, the same. I always have assumed a responsibility and a role for leadership. I've thought that I could bring to the table insight, an ability to question decisions, an ability to reach consensus and see things through. The attraction I have to leadership positions continued when I was working in the Department of Corrections as well. I had joined many different special committees and projects trying to press forward with the innovations and the communication that we needed. Does that mean I'm done? Wow, that went fast. I still had some more things I wanted to tell you, but I'll get back to it.
Thank you, Ms. Cole, Mr. Danielson.
Hi, my name is Blaine Danielson, and I'm originally from Rotsey, down the road here. Graduated from high school, attended NDSU, majoring in econ, minoring in business finance. I've been married to my wife for 27 years. We have four students, all who graduated from Fergus Falls High School, and we're now gone in different areas. And this will be, I'm just currently finished up my first four-year term on the school board. Originally ran on the branch of the school board, just as a, different options, different opinions, and didn't know what to expect, but it's been a real learning for years and hopefully learn some more. But I've served on different boards in town with different groups, and over the years, been very active in the school system with different clubs as my kids went through the school program, whether it been in sports or the arts. They were all in band and choir, things like that, so was very involved with those also. And continue to be involved in different sport activities currently right now. Did a lot of the announcing for 12 years at the school, and I'll be back doing that again a little bit this winter, so that's just a short synopsis of myself.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson, Mr. Hugmo.
John Hugmo. I grew up in North Dakota, little town, Hamden, North Dakota. Went to school at North Dakota State School of Science when it was called that, NDSU. I'm a massage therapist. I started a business 22 years ago, and we came here with our oldest son, Benjamin. And my wife is from Fergus Falls. She grew up here. We moved here. And the comments that I heard when I first moved here were what a great place this was to raise a kid, to raise our children. And I'd go, yeah, yeah, there's lots of great places to raise children. And 22 years later, and three kids graduated from high school, I have to say it is a great place to raise children. I'd like it to be a place where people come here to work in the future. They're going to be commuting electronically and just to make the school as good as it was for us. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hugmo, Ms. Hermes.
Thank you. I graduated from school, from Colorado State University in 1987. I'm originally from Colorado, and I moved here after serving two years in the United States Peace Corps in Chad, Central Africa. I met my husband there, Paul, and he told me that Minnesota was God's country, and so I believed him and moved here. I've worked in public schools as a teacher, teaching English, a foreign language, in Chad. In addition, I worked at the Almunia Cultural Center in Jermaine, Chad. Upon my return to the United States, I completed a master's degree in curriculum and instruction at St. Thomas University in St. Paul. And I've worked at the Ottertail County Historical Society as the education coordinator since 1991 with a brief hiatus. In that capacity, I've developed and presented outreach programming to learners of all ages, from pre-K in ECFE to community college students and seniors in long-term care facilities. I've been a substitute teacher in public schools, and I've worked as a school secretary at Our Lady of Victory School, and I worked in the childcare center at YMCA. I believe that that it is important for a school board member to take into consideration all of the different learners in the school district, from pre-K to adults taking adult basic ed and other community ed classes. And I have experience with all of those, and I hope to be able to continue that on the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Hermes. Now begins the debate proper. As a reminder, our candidates will each be allowed two minutes to respond to the question asked, and the ordering of questioning will rotate one candidate to the audience's right in the interest of fairness. Again, we ask that the audience withhold applause during this part of the debate, and please silence your phones or electronic devices. We'll begin with the first of two questions, which were released in advance to the candidates. "It takes passion to run for political office and to serve. This position in particular can be time-consuming and complex. What personally motivates you to want to become a school board member?" And for our first question, we'll look first to you, Mr. Anderson.
So what motivates me to want to become a school board member? That's a great question. I was one of seven candidates two years ago. There were three open positions on the board, and I finished fourth, just 100 votes behind the third candidate. And so, a lot of people ask me that, why are 100 for school board again? Like, I mean, are you crazy? I mean, some people say, I think you did a good job, and you know, we could use a change, but just why are you, why are you doing this? And the answer again is kind of like this. I'm in a school, elementary school in Madison. That was on South Shore. It's torn down now. Later on, as a sixth grader, I watched the junior high burn down, and we experienced a split shift concept in seventh grade. And so, my classmates and I, we roamed the halls of the middle school, random middle school, the following year. I'm an autograduate. My wife is a graduate. Her siblings are, my two brothers and my sister are both autors, and they're my children. We have a granddaughter who graduated from Fergus Falls, and we currently have one in kindergarten, one in fourth grade, and one in sixth grade. So our school district has a great history and has always come up with creative solutions to the challenges that have been faced, and I've seen that. I believe that I understand that history of our district, and now I have the time and talents to contribute to the formation of future solutions as we face new challenges. So when someone asks what my strengths are, I tell them that I'm pragmatic, I'm respectful, I'm analytical, and I'm very good at building consensus. And now that I'm retired, I have the time to go back to the community. So what motivates me is that I want our grandkids to have what I have, and that's a quality education. Because quality education, there really is a true partnership between the board, the administration, the educators, the students, parents, and community members, and I want to make it a priority to involve as many stakeholders as possible in the planning process. And I think the key is to listen. You know, listening allows one to analyze needs and wants, gather information and data, and set priorities and allocations. And it must be a collaborative process, and I think that I can do that, to bring stakeholders together, and that's what motivates me.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Cole.
My primary motivation for being on the school board is that I consider it a service to my community. I'm invested in this community. I have served in many capacities through, not only in my prior 16 years on the board, but in other areas of the community, such as the Lake Region Halfway House Board, the Domestic Violence Task Force, different, the YMCA boards. All those are, have similarity in that it's a service to my community. I'm invested in Fergus Falls, and I want to continue to serve in that capacity. I have an interest in children, and I think that by being on the board and directing how the school operates, the priorities of the school, by working with the staff and the programming and the funding and all the facets of that, that I am contributing largely to the kids in our community, and that I value quite highly. I also am comfortable, as I said earlier, with making decisions, and I feel like I have the intellect, the ability to ask questions, to contribute, and be a successful school board member.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson.
If you'd asked me that question four years ago, when I was running, first time on the school board, I probably would have had really no idea, other than the fact that people had asked me to run, and I thought that gives them life, and if elected, we'll see what happens. Now, when I ask that question or think of that question, what motivates me is to see the great things that are going on in our school right now. We've had great growth. This year, we had to add a 10th kindergarten section, so growth is a good thing. It can be scary too, because it can present some challenges. We've got great test scores going on. It was released not too long ago how Fergus District compared with other local schools around here, and I think probably in the 85% of the categories, our students tested above those other schools. And we've also, our financial place right now is probably as good as it's been for many years. And so, just the things that we've got going on right now, it motivates me to want to continue doing what we're doing. I got a passion for the students, for the kids, wanting them to succeed. We've got a great staff, and also, I also have a motivating factor to the taxpayers of this district. I was elected by them, so I have a responsibility to them also. So it's a balancing act between the students and the staff and the taxpayers, but it's something that I look forward to hopefully working on for another four years. Thank you.
Mr. Hugmo, your thoughts.
I've completely forgotten my train of thought. What was the question again?
Sure, sure. "It takes passion to run for political office and to serve. This position in particular can be time-consuming and complex. What personally motivates you to want to become a school board member?"
Well, what motivated me was, in one sense, just a desire to serve the community. I've served in different capacities over the years, different boards, within our church, different positions that I've held in the past. I started a business. I like doing that. I like learning. I try to identify issues, problems, and then solutions, and come up with the best answer. And for me, it's a personal challenge. That's about it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hermes.
I have to say that what motivated me initially to actually apply for an empty seat on the school board and then run were family members and neighbors and friends who asked me. During the last election round, people asked me, Missy, have you ever thought about running for the school board? And the answer was, if it had ever crossed my mind, I had probably quickly dismissed it because of work and family commitments. But about a year and a half ago, when a board seat came up because a member had resigned for health reasons, then, at that time, the time was right, and I did apply. And I think why I thought that my job as a museum teacher for the Ottertail County Historical Society would be an asset for the school board. I have a unique position in that I'm able to go to schools all over the county and in our public and private schools. In my heart, I'm a teacher. I think that is what has motivated me to be, to serve on the school board, and really it is a service, and I appreciate it. And I've only been here a short time, so I'd like to continue.
Thank you. Our second question was also provided to candidates in advance. "Each of us walks a slightly different path through life. As a result, we bring our own unique strengths and weaknesses. What particular skills or experiences qualify you to serve as a school board member?" Ms. Cole, we'll ask you first.
When I moved to Fergus Falls, I, as I mentioned, worked for the Department of Corrections and worked in that job for 28 years. I switched about four years ago to become a child protection worker. And that lends itself to the school board role in a couple of ways. For one, you're dealing with some of the students and the children that are, that may be underserved in the community. They bring a dynamic that perhaps isn't commonly thought of by other, by the school personnel. So there's that. The experience of working in those positions, you know that the end game is that you want to, you want to see things better, and that sometimes you have to wade through some of the ugly stuff to get there. And so, you're working through some of the, in that capacity, I work through some of the people's most dire situations and still come, and still come through and try and make things better. So that, but my primary experience is the 16 years I've been on the board. I've learned so much. It's an ever-changing capacity. This is not a stagnant position. You really must attend the trainings. You must be paying attention to the trends in education, the societal trends, the changes in the community, and you need to be, you need to stay connected to those pieces in order to be an effective school board member.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson.
I don't know if I necessarily have any qualities, qualifications, or experience, I guess, that would formally say I'm, I'm, can be on the school board, but I think the last four years has been a real learning experience for me, and serving on different committees and in boards within the school board function itself, I've learned a lot. And I think one of the other things that, I'm very much a people person. I get along very well with people. And being on the school board, you've got six different members, all with different thoughts, ideas, which is great, because that's what we need. And but overall, I don't know that, I can say that any experience or qualifications I have would suit me for a school board or any other board as far as that goes. It's kind of a learning thing as you go, and you hope you do the best you can. And in my situation, I'm hoping I can do the best for the students, the best for the staff, and the best for the taxpayers out there. And again, the number one reason for doing this is for the students and making sure that we can get our, get our students the best education we possibly can have, and get them graduated and on to a successful career.
Thank you, Mr. Hugmo.
I guess, I hope maybe my main skill would be communication, being able to talk back and forth and, and again, find those solutions to the issues from day-to-day running the school to the bigger issues of crowded classrooms, not enough students, the connection between the city and the school, how we can work together with them to build the community, raise it up. Another skill, I guess, would be my wanting to always be learning. So learning how to run the school is no different than the 22 years I've spent learning how to run a business, which has placed me, this is not a good segue, but anyway, I've had the opportunity to talk with so many people in the community, one-to-one, as to what their hopes and wants are for the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Hugmo, Ms. Hermes.
Okay. I feel like my education and work experience actually make me uniquely qualified to be on the school board. It's probably rare to have a person on a school board that has actually been a teacher and has spent time in classrooms at all grade levels, as I have. And I feel that I have a wonderful job that allows me to visit our schools on a regular basis, to talk to teachers, to visit with parents, and also school staff, and get input from them. In addition, as part of my job, just like a teacher has to keep up with the latest in educational trends and the Minnesota Department of Education standards, I also have to do that. Awareness of educational practices that have come and gone, and like, I'm thinking of some of my past, like mastery teaching, or museum educators have to keep up with this latest research too. I also have a genuine interest in the success of all learners in our community, and I hope I can bring that concern to the school board. Both of my children have graduated and move on to college, and their experiences attending schools here in Fergus Falls contributed greatly to their success.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
During my 36-year career at OTP, I managed dozens of employees. I prepared and managed multi-million dollar budgets each year. When I worked in wind development, I managed land acquisition and financial analysis and project proposals that were in the 4500 million dollar range. So I'm used to working with numbers. I have a master's degree in business. I have a ton of computer experience. I guess you might call me a numbers guy. I used to be kind of a computer geek, but I've also worked in the farm. I currently work part-time using my hands doing concrete work and carpentry, and I even play guitar. So I try to have a balance in my life. It's not all just about numbers, and it's not just all about analyzing. It's about finding that balance and finding that sometimes when you're out fishing and hunting. I've been, like you said, I've been in front of a classroom, not full-time, I've been on a part-time basis. For eight years, I taught college students at the community college here, how to use technology, in evening classes. And I also taught adults the basics of computers through community ed during that period. I also spent two years teaching night classes in management through the Cardinal Stretch Adult Education Program. My daughter tells me that I'm the most logical person she knows. She knows I'm pragmatic, she knows I'm analytical, and I can discuss most anything with anybody. But I also have a great skill for listening and for hearing what others are saying and feel, and I think that's a key to serving on a board like this, to plan, to listen, to communicate, and to analyze, and then to listen some more, and to analyze some more, and to make the decisions, and then to follow through on those decisions. I worked at top management to my former employer, facilitating meetings to forge strategic plans to take that large company to the next level. And sometimes it seems like you're burning cats when you're doing that, but at the end of the process, when you have a plan that's put in place and executed properly, that sense of accomplishment is just astounding. And that's what it's all about, and I think that that outlines some of the experiences that I've had that would help me be a good board member.
Thank you, candidates. Arguably, since the tragic shooting at Columbine nearly 20 years ago, an urgency has become apparent for ensuring the safety and security of our children from acts of mass violence. A recent incident at Kennedy Secondary School made news after a local man briefly gained access to the facility before being escorted out and ultimately arrested. What steps should the district take, if any, to improve the safety of our schools? Mr. Danielson, I believe it's your turn, sir.
Yes, after that incident happened, our admin team met a couple different times for that particular situation, and I think it's been for that particular situation, and I think it's been stated for the public, how that will be addressed, and hopefully, something like that particular situation. The door that the kids go in currently, or were going in and out currently at lunch, will now be locked. They'll be designated to a certain door. There'll be more staff present there. When this situation happened, our staff were very active in taking care of the situation and working the proper people. And safety is an issue for us, for all our schools. And currently, the state of Minnesota is offering safety grants and dollars that schools can be used. We're currently, will be, our two elementary schools do have buzzers that have to be buzzed to get into. Cleveland School Elementary School will be the next one, and we'll be doing some safety update to enter the office and the doors there. And we're going to continually keep updating and doing what we can for our safety. And I guess overall, if anyone really wants to get into any school, I guess they're going to do it. But we're going to continue to keep striving to do what we can to best protect our students, our staff, and everyone in the school. And as we find opportunities to do that, we will continue to do that, no matter what the cost is.
Thank you. Mr. Hugmall?
I suppose we need more training, always when something like that happens. Staff training, students should be made aware of what to do when they, when they notice someone who shouldn't be in the school. I've often thought, because with all the doors that we have in the building, it would be nearly impossible to keep someone who's really determined to get into it, to keep them out. It's a disturbing thing. I don't know what the answer is. I would be working really hard to try and figure out what the, like, the solution would be.
Thank you. Ms. Hermes?
Well, one of the things that we can do to help make our schools more safe and secure is continue some of the policies that we already have at the school district. First of all, the training that has been mentioned over and over, making sure that students and teachers know what to do in the case for drills and so on. And we need to, in the future, change some of the entrances. That might be part of our long-term facility plan to make secure entrances at some of our schools, such as the Kennedy Secondary School. But one of the things all of us in this room can do is pressure the state legislature to fund schools and some of these projects. You mentioned, Mr. Blaine Danielson mentioned the grant program through the state of Minnesota. Hundreds and hundreds of grants were written, and only a very small number of school districts received any of those grants. This is how we're going to help make some of these costly changes. The other thing we can do, and we continue to do, is cooperate with the city of Fergus Falls Police Department. Kudos to them for their swift action, and kudos to them, to the staff at the Kennedy Secondary School for jumping right in and making sure that nothing really serious happened.
Thank you, Ms. Hermes. Mr. Anderson, your comments?
This is an interesting topic for me because our son-in-law's a police officer in town here, and we just discussed this at a night as we were doing a Shingland job over at one of his homes. And so, you know, we talked about the things that we've done. We've made great strides in securing entrances and limiting the number of entrances, having people sign in, and watching for people who aren't supposed to be there. We have a school resource officer. We have, we actually have an extra person on, on the city police staff that spends a lot of time cruising the streets around the schools, and so they have an added level of protection there that, that other places in town don't have, and that's a good thing. But I think the thing that hasn't been mentioned yet tonight is I think we need to focus more on the prevention side. If you look at the school shooters and the background of those people, and as they analyze what was happening in the days and the weeks and the months before the shootings took place, there were, it seems like there's always many, many warning signs that were just ignored, or that were just poo-pooed, or that were just not noticed. And I think that those warning signs, you know, it's great to be a Monday morning quarterback and look back with that 2020 hindsight, but if we can learn from those examples, and so now in this day and age of social media, if there's someone who's planning something and somebody sees what's going on, they need to know that it's okay to tell somebody and to try and prevent these things before they happen. I think prevention is probably the biggest key right now because we've taken great strides to try and secure things. But to me, that's, that's number one, looking for the warning signs and trying to prevent these tragedies before they happen.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Cole?
The incident a couple of weeks ago with the intruder in the school was, actually turned out to be more of a success than a failure. However, I too, like Mr. Danielson, kind of rely on the information provided by administration to say that here's what we could have done better. And that would be, you know, locking down the doors, even, even for the minimal times that the students are coming and going out to the playground. And there's been some discussion about whether or not a code yellow or red should have been called, and if that would have served the students and the staff a little more effectively in the course of that. So, always as these incidents occur, there's an analysis, what went well, what needs to be improved, there's, there's room for improvement, even though the intruder didn't get in far and no one was hurt. So we're thankful for the good parts. We do continue the, we need to continue to be vigilant. We need to supply the funding to secure all of our entrances. It saddens me greatly that, that we are more and more turning the schools into fortresses, but that sentiment is pushed aside by the priority of making sure that the children are safe. And so with, with that thought as well, we do have the many things, as mentioned by Mr. Anderson, many key things in place. We've worked with the national, security department has come and toured the schools. We work routinely with Kyle Bergeren and the Fergus Falls Police Department to make sure that all, all the possible avenues are being explored and that we're taking as many preventative steps as we can.
Thank you. Nationally and locally, a well-documented workforce shortage has created hardships for employees looking to expand their business, but lacking the manpower required. It may be safe to say that a great school education is the first step in any career path. What part can the district play in providing the necessary training for future employees, and how might that goal be accomplished? Mr. Hugmall, the floor is yours for two minutes.
I think perhaps in hindsight with our own sons, my oldest in particular, had he been directed more toward a trade rather than the emphasis on a four-year degree, that, I'm not sure, it depends on what we're talking about as far as shortages. I know that there's a shortage in the trades all over the country right now, welders, and we've had a nursing shortage for years, and they don't, they don't require a four-year degree. So, maybe helping to identify those kids at some point, and then guiding them, directing them into those areas. As far as locally here, the world is going to change, and we're going to need more technologically trained kids all the time. So, that may be the future for Fergus Falls, that we're not going to be manufacturing, but we may have areas. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hugmall. Ms. Hermes?
Well, I have to say that I'm really pleased with the program that is in place at the Fergus Falls High School, and that is the Otter Success Plan that the counselors administer, starting with the students in ninth grade, trying to help guide them through that process of choosing a career, knowing what is out there as well. And just last week, I was really pleased with the success of the, the work, I can't think of what it's called, but the, they had the work fair where all the different local businesses were there, and students again, and not just students from our Fergus Falls community, but from all over the local area were able to come and talk to employers and see what is available. In addition, I know that experiences like school-to-work, where students can go out into the community and get a job, those are important assets for our students in Fergus Falls.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, your thoughts?
As far as workforce training, I want to kind of pick up, kind of we're missing that thought. I think work-based, work-based learning, I think, is maybe what you were thinking, is that right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, our district right now is in the process of implementing a work-based program. And the goal of that program is to connect what students are learning in the classroom with what they're learning on the worksite. And there's two components to the program. One is the seminar where students can learn about workplace skills and safety, career exploration, and more. And the other part is the actual worksite experience, which can be a paid or unpaid internship. So, work-based, work-based learning can take other forms as well, including job shadowing, mentorships, and youth apprenticeship. And this is a positive step in combating the current worker shortage and helping students explore their career options. And you know, another step that we can take is to educate our students and our parents and our staff about all of the options that are available to our young adults. You know, some of them want to four or more years of college, but there's a lot of others that won't, and that's okay, because there are many opportunities out there to learn trades and start earning money right away and doing rewarding work. And I've noticed that in some of the part-time work that I'm doing now. I mean, I work with carpenters, I work with people driving trucks, and if you can drive a bobcat, or if you can drive a concrete truck, or if you can drive a tractor or a combine, you can work anywhere in the world and make good money. And so it's okay if you're, if you're not good at numbers, or it's okay if you're not good at spelling, or it's okay if you're not good at some of the science things, but if you're good at working with your hands, and if you're coordinated and you can run those, and operate that equipment, you can have a very valuable career, and so, and that's gotta be okay.
Thank you. Ms. Cole?
When I first heard that question, I thought, well, the workforce shortage is because there's not enough babies and there's not a heck of a lot I'm going to be able to do about that. But, I think the intent of the question really is to talk about the shift that is occurring from a real pronounced expectation that kids go on to a college degree, and to the shift to more technical education. And I'll tell you what, in our Fergus Falls School District, we have so much to be proud of. We have that modern manufacturing learning lab, which takes, took away the old stinky welding shop and turned it into how manufacturing is currently done with the technology. And we partnered with the community to do the upgrade on that, and it's been phenomenal. We had generous donations, but more so, we learned from our local employers how this actually takes place. How, how does that job actually work, and we can bring that to the students. We have the STEM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, Math curriculum, which goes through all the different courses, the, including the English, and just sets out a curriculum for a student dedicated to putting them on course for more technical education. We have partnered with a local healthcare facility to have a CNA class in the school, which ends with the student getting the necessary certificate to get a CNA job. And so, we have, and we have our automotive department as well, which is a true rarity in the school systems. It's left over from when the technical school, vocational school was at the high school. And we continue to have training for students in the automotives department as well.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Mr. Danielson?
No, let me kind of hit on some of the points that I was going to, but it seems like today, a lot of the kids coming out, at least this is my opinion on it, a lot of the kids really don't know what they want to do when they graduate. And luckily, at least, they're still continuing their education, they're going out to the junior college, which is great. They're able to get a lot of their generals out of the way, and they have a lot less cost of going to a four-year school. And as Missy said, we, we offer a lot of alternatives for our students to just help out in our area with the workforce, be it the CNA classes, adult healthcare is probably one of the biggest areas in, in Fergus Falls that we have a need of. They, the facility just cannot get enough workers. So, we're doing what we can there, and we've had a really good response to our CNA classes at the school. Our modern manufacturing lab, like Melanie said, we had some great businesses that we partnered with, brought in CNC machines, 4D printers, giving these kids an opportunity to learn to actually how to run some of these machines, and maybe go out into the area here. They don't have to go out to a four-year school to operate and make really good money. We also, our seniors can go into a mentorship program at the elementary education level if they're thinking about being a teacher, and get some work experience doing that. So, we're doing a lot of different things and trying to entice our kids to get out there, but again, you know, a lot of the kids really don't know what they want to do, and I think they need to get out there and experience just some basic work and find out, you know, what they really want to do. So, the more we can with our counselors, and the more that our teachers can just help, help these kids see what their strengths are and where their future lies is what we need to keep doing.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, candidates. That brings us to a brief five-minute intermission. At this time, we will take five minutes to allow our media partners an opportunity for station identification and advertising. To our audience, please feel free to stand up and move around. Our program will continue at 7:51 with questions received from the public. Thank you. All right, I'd ask our audience to please find their seats once more as we resume tonight's candidate forum. In the first half of our program, candidates tackled a selection of questions prepared by myself. Now we'll turn the conversation to questions received from members of the public. Before we begin, I want to once more take a moment to thank those of you who submitted your questions. Following a four-decade career in education and nearly 13 years with the Fergus Falls School District, Superintendent Jerry Ness recently announced his anticipated retirement. As a result, members of the 2019 school board will be in the unique position of hiring a new superintendent to oversee the district. What in your opinion are the top characteristics board members should be seeking in a new school leader? And Ms. Hermes, we'll ask you first.
Well, I believe it's really important to select a superintendent who communicates well with the community, parents, teachers, support staff, and the school board. And this means listening as well as speaking. So, a superintendent should respect also the dignity and worth of each student and staff member of the district. While I know that a school superintendent is considered to be the CEO of a school district, public schools are not businesses. Yes, the person who will be the superintendent of the school will have the responsibilities of hiring, firing, and financial matters, but ultimately, a school district, our school district, is an organization that needs a leader who is seeking to do best, do what is best for students, and who has a vision to accomplish that. I also think a good superintendent participates in our broader community, models lifelong learning, and acts in a manner that reflects well on our school district.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
I think that our new superintendent must have very clear, long-term goals and be able to develop strategies to achieve those goals, and to work with the, with the board and with the staff and with the community to determine what those goals are. I think he or she must also be able to work with, with community members to achieve buying those goals. And ideally, the superintendent will work cooperatively with the staff, supporting their ideas, and celebrating their strengths to really give total commitment from everyone and all stakeholders. There are three things I'd like to see in the new superintendent, as far as attributes. I'd like to see a vision, a clear vision of what needs to be done to maintain and improve our district. I think it's critical to set a vision, set the objectives, and also measurable goals, and follow through and achieve those goals. I think we need an attribute of leadership. A great superintendent must be knowledgeable about the best practices for maximizing achievements of our students, as well as giving support to our students, to our teachers and staff. And the third attribute that I'd like to see is listening and communication skills. A superintendent must take in all differing viewpoints, as well as communicating the district needs and accomplishments. I think he or she must also be adept at utilizing all the channels of communication, including interpersonal, written communication, social media, traditional including interpersonal, written communication, social media, traditional media, and also public speaking. It's a big deal. Jerry's done a good job when he's been here, and there's some big shoes to fill. And I think that there are some very capable people out there, and I hope that we can find a good one. And what I would like to say would maybe be the best of the best, because we have a great school district that some of them just love to come in and start working with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
I would look for a school leader that would continue the steps that Jerry Ness has taken to integrate the community's input and to send the message out. I think that superintendent has to have a constant method of communication with the community. But even as important is a leader that is aware of the trends in education, that works with the staff to integrate those trends into our classroom and to learn from the staff what works and doesn't work as far as they are concerned. I'd look for a leader that would have a good, solid educational background, not so much important to me that they have achieved a high level of education themselves, such as a doctorate, but more so. It's important to me to know that they are continually involved in education and are aware of what's going on and have the ability, as Mr. Anderson said, to have a vision for the district. It's a little difficult because to set a long, an extremely long-term goal because of the changes in education, so I look for somebody who can remain flexible. I look for honesty, integrity, I look for someone who has an ability to connect with people. Those are all characteristics that I seek when I'm looking for a superintendent, a genuine person, somebody who, because the community will be able to tell if we have someone who's not truly invested in our community. I would also hope for someone who has a passion and an energy. One of the things I've enjoyed so much with Jerry Ness is he's just unabashedly states that he loves kids and that's why he does his job. And I would look for someone who is in the position for all those reasons.
Thank you. Mr. Danielson, your thoughts?
First and foremost, the superintendent Ness is well-respected in the state of Minnesota, and these are going to be really big shoes to fill. And I expect we're going to have a lot of applicants. This is a very good district to have a superintendent positioned in. First and foremost, what I want to see in someone that gets hired here is, and Melanie touched on this, but it's a passion for education. That person has to have a passion for education, for students, for the staff. They've got to be a good communicator, someone that's willing to listen and, you know, not jump at the first thing, but willing to sit down and really think it out and get involved out in the public, get involved in the student activities, be very, very visible at games, which superintendent Jerry Ness is. He's at athletic events, he's at musical events, he's at plays, whatever it might be. He's involved in local service clubs. So, someone that's just out there, that's visible, that's willing to talk to people when they come up and want to talk to them. Might not be able to get you the answer right now, but I'll get back to you with the answer. And just overall, be concerned about our students and getting them through school, getting graduated, and getting them onto a successful career, a successful life.
Thank you. Mr. Danielson, Mr. Haugmull?
Yes. Leader, staff, community, students, communicator, the ability to communicate to our community what's needed, what's, why certain things are being done. And, that heart and educator, someone who can still relate to our teachers and staff. And those are the things that I think are important, as well as pretty much everything everyone else said tonight, so. I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, sir. Serving as a school board member means a responsibility for a budget of a considerable scale. What experience do you have that would be relevant to a multimillion-dollar balance? And what do you believe should be the district's guiding financial principles going forward? Mr. Anderson will ask you first.
Well, my experience was in the private sector, and we can certainly make comparisons between the private sector and the public school system. In the private sector, we have to balance the needs of the customers and the employees and the shareholders. And in the school district, we have school district teachers, we have administration, we have support staff, we have students, we have parents, we have community members, we have taxpayers. So, there's a balancing act that has to take place there as well. I mentioned earlier, when I was working in wind development, that I worked on the financial analysis and land acquisition for some of the large wind farms like you see in North Dakota and even up in Irola. And as we were developing those models and trying to work to find finance and things like that, we were working with budgets of hundreds of millions of dollars. When I was in IT, I managed and hired and fired people and also had multi-million dollar budgets every year. So, I'm used to working with big numbers. And in our school district now, with the funding, the funding levels we have, I think that we need to see if we can work a little harder, working closely with other school districts and with our legislators, to see if we can improve our funding and improve the reliability of the funding. But again, with my experience with numbers, my experience with working in the private sector, I see that there's a direct correlation to working with the various stakeholders in the school system, and I have a lot of confidence that I can do well.
Ms. Cole, your response?
Would you, Mr. Drews, would you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. Serving as a school board member means a responsibility for a budget of considerable scale. What experience do you have that would be relevant to a multimillion-dollar balance? And what do you believe should be the district's guiding financial policies going forward?
Thank you. The experience that I have is the 16 years on this school board, as well as nearly the same amount of time on the Region One School Board, based out of Moorhead, and then also on the Special Education Cooperative Board. In each of those board capacities, I routinely review the budget. Specifically, the Fergus Falls School District Board is the one I'm most enmeshed in. And I have been on the board since we were declared in statutory operating debt and had to make some really drastic and significant cuts in order to, in order to make the numbers work. So, we have had a lot of experience with weighing the pros and cons of the programming that we have in place. And of course, the contract negotiations sometimes get really tense and strangulated due to the funding, so those are, so that, all the experience that goes with having done that through 16 different years is really significant. And it boils down to a guiding principle that's a lot like my family checkbook. Well, I'm the only person in my family, but that if you can't afford it, you cannot do it. And so, that, and either you need to have a way to make more money or spend less money. I mean, it's fairly simple. I take very seriously the financial responsibility that the taxpayers have trusted me with in my role on the school board, and I try to be very true to the finances. And I don't know how to end this sentence because the red flag went up.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Mr. Danielson?
I don't claim to be a financial guru, a financial manager, and I guess that's what we have a business manager for in the Fergus Falls District. And Mark Mastin is a very good business manager. What I do rely on is Mark providing me with good numbers, good budget numbers, good numbers that are coming from the state. Then, as being part of the school board member, it's my responsibility to look at that and evaluate what's best for the district after that. And to talk with the rest of the school board members and see is this something that's feasible for the district? Should we be spending money? Should we not? But as far as me doing the overall, working with the budgets, that's not something that I'm going to do that we need to do. That's why we hire a business manager, and that's his responsibility. But again, once we have those numbers, it's our responsibility to make the good decision for the district and for taxpayers, and because we're fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of this district.
Thank you. Mr. Danielson, Mr. Haugmull?
Revenue comes in and expenditures go out, and it's about as much as I know about that. One thing I would like to see us do is maybe not repeat mistakes of the past, not the current board necessarily, but just in maintenance of the building. I remember 20 years ago, that was an issue, that the buildings were, I remember going into the wrestling room, and we had tiles that were busted out and things like that. So, prioritizing our facilities and keeping those up to date is important to this community, to me personally. Yep. And then making the best decisions we can with the money that we have and keeping the books balanced.
Thank you, Mr. Haugmull. Ms. Hermes?
Well, I have never been the person who creates the budget, but I've always been the person that stuck with the budget. I have to admit that when I first was, when, was put on the school board, when I was selected to be, to take over that empty seat, and was put right away on the finance committee, it was definitely an education for me. The numbers are, you're right, they're incredible. But I also have experience working in the nonprofit sector, and there are very few organizations that have to stick to tighter budgets than nonprofits. And so, I'm a taxpayer, I am also, I'm a parent, I'm a homeowner, and so, the guiding philosophy has to be, do we really need that? Is that what's best for us? Is that something that we can afford in our budget? And be conservative, and let's do what's best for our school district.
Thank you, Ms. Hermes. Success can be a nebulous term. Some associate it with financial well-being, others with more academic or relationship-based achievements. How would you define success for a student? Ms. Cole, we'll ask you first.
There are a lot of different facets to that, as you allude to. For some students, success is achieving a whole grade level of achievement in one school year, and for another student, success could be just zooming past their grade level and into some advanced academics. For some students, success is their accomplishments in the athletics or the arts, and for others, it simply lies in the classroom. So, I cherish the thought that it's, that it's ever-changing. Now, could you repeat the question again? But that it is a variable commodity for each person, but I must, my track there.
Sure, absolutely. Success can be a nebulous term. Some associate it with financial well-being, others with more academic or relationship-based achievements. How would you define success for a student?
To personalize it, for my children, I always looked for them to treat the staff with respect and their co, and their fellow students with respect, and then to do their very best. And so, for me, that's a strong measure of success. I want the, I want my student, any students, to feel as though they belong in the school, that they have the relationships that matter. I want them to see, see them to have the opportunity to get their best possible education. And whether that means a course into a four-year degree in higher education, or as we spoke of, more technical education, to be able to provide a student with a good platform where they can make those decisions, where they can define it for themselves and have the tools to discern if something's for them or not, those would all be key pieces in success for a student.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Mr. Danielson?
To me, a successful, a successful student is one that can go up in society and not be afraid of failure because of things that they maybe already learned. Some students can graduate with an A, some students might graduate with a C, and there's nothing wrong with that. Some students aren't good at taking tests, and because of that, their grades might reflect that. But you know what? That person is just, will be just as good out in society as that one with a straight A. Straight A students might lack social skills, might have a tough times exceeding out in society. So, for me, it's the students that are engaged in different activities, whether it's in plays, whether it's in musicals, whether it's in bands, sports, whatever, but aren't afraid to get out there and fail, but learn from their failures. And that, hopefully, once they learn from that, they're going to succeed and move on and be successful. So, just graduating from school is a big step, and then getting out in society and finding out what's out in that big world.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson. Mr. Haugmull?
I think as a board, as a school district, one measure of success would be to produce young adults who become contributing members of our society in that they'll go on and they'll see the importance of raising children, rearing children, and again, completing that cycle over and over. So, again, success, welders, doctors, lawyers, whatever their path leads them. And it's part of the district's teachers', parents', job is to help them achieve that, whatever that should mean.
Thank you, Mr. Haugmull. Ms. Hermes?
I think that for a student to feel or be successful, first of all, they need to feel welcome and safe in our schools. And then, in order to be successful, they're going to have to be a contributing member of a learning, of our learning community. And you're right, that can be the activities that they are in, whether, or getting along with others. Our big measure that we have for the school district to measure success is graduation. And we have, we are successful, they are successful. We have a very high graduation rate here in Fergus Falls. And whether you attend the Area Learning Center, or the IQ Academy, or the Kennedy Secondary School, we need to have successful students graduating. I think that being welcome and being safe are, all contribute to the mental health of our students, and so, mental and physical health, that's important too for their success.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. Define success for a student. I mean, if you've got 300 students graduating, you're going to have probably about 40 different formulas for success. But there are some common things to look forward to. I think there's a lot of distractions, especially nowadays with social media and with drugs and with any number of different distractions. I think there is a correlation to having extracurricular activities and keeping kids active and busy in school activities. I look at, I look at my classmates from back in the seventies, and we've had 10-year reunion, 20-year, 30-year, 40-year, more than I care to say. But there are still some of the same people that still have a bitter taste in their mouth from high school, and they live in town and still go to their reunion because seeing old classmates brings back memories that are not pleasant. So, I think we've made great strides in reducing the model of eating and making things more flexible for students, making flexible learning plans, flexible seating arrangements in classrooms, for instance, flexible everything. And I think that we're tailoring education towards the students, focusing on their weaknesses and playing to their strengths. I look at my grandson right now, that's five years old, he's in kindergarten, class of 2031, by the way, and I see this innocence of all of his classmates, they go to school every day over the family, and I take him in every Wednesday. And I just see this exuberance of the kids going every day because they get to go to school and they're excited. And if we can try and keep that same energy all the way through 12th grade, that would be awesome. And I think that's the key. We need to continue to provide positive experiences in school so that when kids leave school, they have that good taste that it was great, that school was great, and they don't come back and say, 30 years from now, gee, I don't want to see anybody from my class because school's stuck, you know? And unfortunately, that's what has happened many times. So, regardless of where they go or what they do and how successful they are, if we can continue to provide positive role models from our teachers, continue to... we can continue to provide positive role models from our teachers, continue to keep people, have kids energized, keep them busy, I think that they will definitely be successful students.
Thank you. Our final question comes in two parts. If elected to serve as a school board member, what do you see as the district's greatest strength? And somewhat conversely, what would be your top priority and focus for the future? And I'll note that due to the air schedule with some of our media partners, we're going to limit responses on this one to 60 seconds. Mr. Danielson will ask you first.
Our greatest strength, I think, is our, just our overall staff, our teachers are our greatest strength. We have the best teachers in the state of Minnesota. I mean, when we go out there and open up job applications, we get way more applications than we can even think of having. These are, these are really wanted jobs here in Fergus. And so, we hire great, great teachers, and I think that the biggest, my concern, the biggest concern is state funding. I think the state budget's going to be coming out under announcement here soon, but state funding formula needs to be fixed. I don't know how to fix it, but that is my biggest concern, is the state funding.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson, Mr. Hugmull.
Absolutely. I believe our greatest strength is our teachers, the administration, the school board, this community, just how we work together to achieve the goals of teaching children, educating them, that is our strength. I realize there's many, many problems that I'm not aware of at this point, but just as a father who has graduated now three kids, again, the teachers have been fantastic, and we are so thankful as a family to this community.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Hermes.
I agree. I second what everyone has already said about the people. The people of our school district are our greatest strength, our paraprofessionals, our teachers, other staff, the secretaries in the office, everybody working together as a team. This is the greatest strength of the Fergus Falls School District. And funding definitely is a concern, whether it's the cross subsidy for special education, or funding for these safety and security issues, or just per pupil funding. Funding is going to be a big issue in the next legislature.
Thank you, Ms. Hermes, Mr. Anderson.
I think we've got a great combination of staff and facilities and good technology. We seem to have a really good mix of everything. I think our school district has got a lot of good things going forward, and certainly our staff and the way that they've, the way that they've developed and into the degree of futures that they are, I think is, I'm just starting what everybody else has said. Funding, I think if you haven't read it yet, read Matt Lukey's letter to the editor last week about funding, and I think it really encapsulates what the problem is right now with state funding. We don't, the money we're getting today just doesn't buy what we're used to, and there's just so much uncertainty in funding. So, is that going to be a lot of what I've already heard?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Cole, your thoughts?
Again, with, again, with the staff being our greatest, one of our greatest strengths in the school district, and it is incredible, as someone who visits the school, to see how familiar the staff are with the students, and how they can be very professional with people coming into the building, but also make the schools a warm place where you want to be. We do have a great reputation as a regional leader, and we're, we have an outstanding staff. As far as our challenge, I think it's planning for the future. That does include funding, but that also includes bringing the community on board to talk about new facilities, and about the directions, what's relevant, but, you know, just staying relevant with the changes in the workforce and in our community as well.
Thank you, candidates. I want to thank you for your patience and courtesy, as we've tackled some difficult questions this evening. At this point, we will allow each candidate two minutes to provide a closing statement. We'll begin again from left to right with Mr. Anderson.
I would just like to say, again, as a graduate of this district, and in fact, my dad graduated from Fergus Falls High in '52, I think, and my mother, my relative, and my dad's '52, '55, I can say that. And it's, our whole family, including our daughters, our older ones, and we have the honor of pride, and we always celebrate that pride. I look at our students today, and I see so many distractions. I think of when I was, was working in 1998 or 1999, we had one internet station in our whole company where I worked, one, it was in the library. And I look at how that's changed in 20 years, you look at how the internet has changed our life in 20 years, and then you wonder how the kids, we have a grandson right now, it's only a year and a half old, so you wonder what life's going to be like in 20 years for that little guy, as much as we've seen the internet change our life in the last 20 years. And people say, "Well, things have slowed down," it's not going to keep accelerating, but it won't. I've been in technology my whole life, it's going to continue to accelerate, and so we're going to have to adapt, we're going to have to continue to change, we're going to have to have leaders who can adapt to that change, and who can be flexible, who can make plans, and who can listen to all the stakeholders, and who can analyze things, and who can make plans, and who can get those plans completed. And it's, it's been a challenge in any leadership role, and our schools are going to change in the next 20 years just as much as they've changed in the last 20, the last 20 before that. It's changed a lot since 1955, hasn't it, Mark? So, we, we, I think we have a good staff, we have great students, great staff, we have a good board, we're going to continue to look forward to that challenge, and I mean, those challenges in the future, and I hope I can be part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Cole, your final remarks.
In running for the school board, I have a platform that includes three primary categories, one being ongoing community involvement with our school, to keep them informed and to take into, from the community, the information that's relevant to how to run our school district. I also believe that financial management in the school district is imperative, and that's something that we need to change and control, to, to try and control locally, but also to lobby on a larger state level to try and get that changed. I also believe that keeping current with programming and facilities is imperative, and I can't even imagine where we'll be in 10 years from now with education because of all the lightning speed with which things change. So, those are my primary considerations, and things I'd like to prioritize on the board. I'd like to continue to see the progress that we've made in the school district, and I would like to take the experience that I have with my term on the board and use that to choose our new superintendent. It's one of the more, most significant things, I think, that a board member can do. I've had the privilege of choosing a superintendent in the past, and I believe that that is really a key role. I am a person that's invested in this position. I attend the meetings, the training, I stay abreast of what needs to be current with the school board. I like to make the decisions that are practical-based, and, and I'm grounded in, in just making it work. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Cole, Mr. Danielson, your closing remarks.
I'd just like to say, I feel very privileged, very honored to have been elected to this board four years ago, and it's something I don't take lightly. The taxpayers entrusted me to help guide their students to get through school and to graduate, and I'd also like to thank the community, because without the support of this community, we couldn't do what we do at the school. This is, this is the greatest community support in the state of Minnesota, from the city of Fergus Falls, and just the surrounding taxpayers. And it takes all of us to help get these kids through school, so a lot of different things going on in society today, and the teachers need the parents' help, we need, we need everybody's help. So, again, I just want to say thank you, I look forward to hopefully serving another four years, and continuing doing what we've been doing in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Danielson, Mr. Hugmull, your closing remarks.
I just look forward to serving the community, serving the school district. If I'm, if I'm brought onto the board, I'll work hard, I'll go learn how to be a good school board member, I'll learn about the budget, our financing, I've been doing some of that over the last few months. With time, I'd like to, I guess a personal goal would be that every one of our kids have the same opportunities that mine did, and if there's some way to, to achieve that through the school board, I'll work hard to find it.
Thank you, Mr. Hugmull, Ms. Hermes.
When people ask me, "Missy, how's it going on the school board?" I tell people, "I love it. I really, really love serving in this role." And I've only been on the board for a year and a half, but going to all the committees, and meeting with teachers, and meeting with students as well, and going to activities is really a pleasure. And there's definitely a learning curve in this role, and I believe that if I'm reelected, an additional term on the school board would benefit the district. One of the things that I really want to make sure happens in our school district is that our schools are providing educational equity for all of our students, whether it's a child that takes classes at the Area Learning Center, whether they're completing coursework through the IQ Academy, whether they have special education needs, whether they're an English language learner, whether they qualify for free and reduced lunch, or whether they're just a B student like I was when I was in school. I hope to accomplish that in partnership with teachers and parents, and with the community, and I hope I get to do that for another four years.
Thank you, Ms. Hermes. Ladies and gentlemen, and to those watching and listening at home, that brings us to the conclusion of tonight's forum. Before we adjourn, I want to take one final opportunity to thank our sponsors, the Fergus Falls Noon Rotary, the Fergus Falls Daily Journal, Leighton Broadcasting, and Peg Access Television for making this event possible. I also want to thank our candidates for taking the time to be here today, and the Center for the Arts for providing the space. Finally, a special thank you to everyone in attendance here and at home for being involved in local government and the future of Fergus Falls and our school system. A quick reminder that elections will be held on Tuesday, November 6th. That date is only a little more than two weeks away. Although who you vote for can have a lasting impact, please remember that it is the right to vote in and of itself that so many great men and women have given their lives to protect. Thank you all again, and please feel free to stay and greet your candidates. Thank you, and good night, if you'd join me in a round of applause.